And then moving into looking forward, um left side you see state, right side you see federals. I'll just start with state. Um again, we're going to have another turnover in the legislature. We had thirty percent last year. We're gonna have twenty five percent this year. That is a lot of turnover in the legislature over fifty percent in the last, you know, two years odd. Um that means a lot of education. It means a lot of uh new ideas, frankly, maybe some radical ideas on both sides. Um tend to come to the middle once they're up there, but um there's definitely going to be a lot of new concepts introduced. Um I mentioned public safety retail theft. I don't think it's over, no matter what happens with Prop thirty six this year. Um I don't think this issue is over in California. I think we are definitely going to continue to uh, you know, uh pass bills or introduce bills on the measure. Um and then sales tax reform, um it's very possible that we see um the result of the working groups of the League of California Cities and other um a- a organizations and and or and agencies when it comes to trying to make some parity between point of sale, point of destination on some of the sales tax distribution in a modern online digital age. Um so it's likely or it's possible we will see something introduced next year on that. Probably both on the policy side and the constitutional amendment side. It's going to take an amendment to the constitution. So um look out for that. Um I I I don't know for sure if that's coming, but it is definitely going to be a conversation that um comes to head next year. Um and then on the federal side, um election outcomes are very important this year in DC. Um it's possible that um, you know, a lot uh right now the balance of power might stay the same, but it might be swapping in terms of Senate, House, uh White House as well. So it's it's very hard to predict the outcomes of that, but it's um unlikely it's going to be a full sweep on on each side is my guess. Um although I'm not a betting man when it comes to federal federal elections, um but it is likely we'll have some sort of divided government as well. Um fiscal appropriations, um continuing resolution was passed, or sorry, is a planning on passing this week to take us from the end of the fiscal year into December twentieth. Um so this fiscal federal year ends in six days. As you know, we never pass a budget on time in DC. We are going to extend until December twentieth. Um I know Councilmember Taylor is going to ask me, why December twentieth? That looks, that seems so specific. Um it is very specific. It's the Friday before Christmas, number one. They want to get out of town and go back home to their district. Um but also December fifteenth is the uh paycheck day for service members, for armed service members. So that is an important date that they definitely want to fund the government through that time to make sure that you know, our our uh armed services can be paid um through the holidays, um and then they will come back and see what they can do. Um I think this is going into the new year, frankly. I think it's probably going into after a new house and senate and and potentially White House is is sat. Um so I don't, I think we're in for the long haul in terms of uh, you know, maybe uh Q one, Q one, Q one of next year. Um Tax Cuts and Jobs Act, the um the Trump presidency's uh twenty seventeen, I believe, tax cut is expiring um next year. Uh something will have to be done on it. It will be addressed somehow. Um it probably will not be the same, but it will be um a conversation and negotiation. Uh but a couple of important things that are on the table during that negotiation is the low income tax credit and the child tax credit primarily, probably followed closely by the state and local tax deduction, the SALT deduction tax. Uh it's at ten thousand dollars right now in California, which does not benefit Californians very much. Um so to be able to duck that off if you're federal taxes. So uh it'll definitely be a conversation going into next year, but again, probably all reliant on that election outcome as I talked about. And then why is the federal budget important for us? Because we still have one of our earmarked projects in uh uh in limbo, waiting for uh waiting for the budget to be signed. Next slide, please. It will be right there. That is our community center, senior center answer project, still in the bill for five hundred thousand dollars. Uh and it is uh, it will, it will meet the same fate as uh the rest of them um in DC. But as soon as that budget is signed, then we have access to that money. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Um you had mentioned Prop uh thirty three. Oh, sorry. Okay, right. Uh you had mentioned uh Prop thirty three, how it would provide, uh I guess the whole government a bit more flexibility. Um does that apply to mobile home parks as well, or that just um apartments and things like that?
I I I can find out. I I I know that's a, I think it's a little bit of a nuanced question. I know that's it's, I know all the rent control we passed here in California did not apply that way, the same way. Um I'd have to really get down to into it to see if that applies legally. Um you're probably in a better position than you were in the bill that we passed because it is a constitutional amendment um or proposition, um but I'd have to really dive into that property rental piece of it. That's the mobile home piece. So um let me, let me find out, but I don't have the answer for you off the top of my head.
Yeah.
The um a lot of these bills, there's no funding coming with them, especially for housing, right?
Other than the funding that was restored in the budget um for the multifamily housing program and HAP funding that at some level trickles down into the county and to where we are. Um there's no direct funding with any of the housing element bills. In fact, there's penalties associated with them if you don't follow them. Um that can be pretty stiff.
Yeah, well, like fifty thousand dollars a month, but yet there's no funding for the other three bills. So that's um, you know, kind of building up your own pot, but not getting it back to anybody that's doing the right thing. Pretty sad.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Okay, as always, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to consent calendar. Um we have items nine A three receiving correspondence.
Mr. Mayor, we have none.
Okay. I'd like to pull on nine E and nine G. Is anybody else need to be pulled?
On the vote. Second.
On paper?
On.
Anybody opposed? Okay.
Mr. Mayor. We'll begin with item nine E, Mr. Mayor, acceptance of the eight nine three zero Pacific Avenue demolition and abatement project. Your questions for staff, sir?
Thank you. I just wanted to point out that um the reason that we are demolition or abatement of these this building is simply because I'm not sure if this is the one that burned to the ground or not. It was, but we also have others that are inhabitable for various reasons, whether it's health and safety. So one of the things we're trying to do is we're trying to at least abate those buildings that are a negative influence on the community and that neighborhood. And we will continue to do that so that we can at least make the environment a little bit healthier and safe for the people that live there.
And I I do want to mention that the the units in which there are people living in them do meet all health and safety requirements. Yes.
All right, go ahead. Move it.
Second.
All in paper?
On high.
Anybody object? Thank you. Go ahead.
It's mayor. The next item is nine G, professional services agreement for processing of parking and administrative citations. We do have a representative from Turbo Data who is here this evening. Your questions for staff, sir?
Thank you. I just had a couple of comments. I just want the citizens of our communities to know that we're not just going to come out and start ticking everybody right away. We're gonna have, I believe, a grace period uh to where we can give you a violation warning. A lot of people have been parking illegally in our city, and we haven't been able to address it. And for the safety reasons for the public, we're going to now begin trying to enforce some of our illegal parking uh to make the city safe, number one, and to also follow our codes. So the folks out there that um are parking illegally, you'll be given a warning. Not a bill, it's just kind of a warning citation.
For one week only.
For one week only. So you have seven days to reform. And after that, the reformation's over and Mr. Ren and his uh, his uh enforcement people will be very, 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 very proactive. Okay, so we think it's in the best uh interests of our community to have this uh enforcement issue, especially with the fact that with our human trafficking and prostitution, uh we have a lot of people illegally parking. And so maybe this will defray some of the Johns from where they park in our city. It also helps with robbers and other people that come into our community that park and then do various crimes. So hopefully, with the help of our sheriff's department and working with our code enforcement, we should be in pretty good shape. We do have the administrator for this company here?
This particular agenda item is actually the software that will support parking citations, so...
But we only have the... There's no, there's nobody from that company here tonight, right?
From SP Plus? No. So, but we have a representative from Turbo Data Systems, which is the software.
So we do have the software record.
Yes.
Good evening, council, mayor. I'm Doug Amis, I'm the client service manager with Turbo Data Systems. And we have, we've been doing processing for the city for parking for quite some time, I think well over ten, fifteen years now. But part of this warning process and everything, I know we just recently, last year, added enhancement of electronic ticketing or e-sites, and that's going to also help with that warning process. It's going to, you know, get the process through, track it and take care of that. So if there are the individuals that don't learn right away, they're going to find out. But again, it's also a very fast and efficient way for them to issue the tickets. They've been able to improve their efficiency quite a bit since we added that. That was picked up just the end of twenty twenty-three. And I fully expect them to continue, and I know that we're already ready to go with the SP plus team. We've already integrated with them as well. But I'm open for any questions or anything you're looking for.
Any questions?
Thank you for the service. We also do have an appeal process, I believe, is that correct?
Yes, we handled the appeal process and people can appeal online. And it's all done, all, we gather all the paperwork, provide it for the, for the city for review. And all the citizens, all the reviews are done by the city, so you, they see the activity, what's, you know, reasons for the appeal, they can react then, you can take action accordingly based on the appeals.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for being here tonight. Here's your motion.
To approve.
Balance.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody object, abstain? Thank you. We have no public hearings tonight. Unfinished business, but Donald Lee brought this back because you missed the last meeting. This is an approval to redesign the city's official logo, branding and messaging.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, I would like to introduce Community Services Manager Ashley Kane. She's going to give an overview of the project to date and the recommended action for the evening.
Doesn't work for you, just next slide and I'll proceed for you. We do, Mayor, members of the city council, I'm here tonight to seek final approval for this branding and messaging project. First and foremost, I'd like to thank the members of the AdHOP committee, council members Warren and Taylor, for their partnership over the past few months, four years. My report and recommended action, the report agreed. This report seeks city council approval for the finalized design elements of Stanton, Stanton branding and messaging project. These elements include a comprehensive logo system, city motto, communication plan and weight binding sign guidelines. The recommended action tonight is to declare the project exempt from CECL and to approve the finalized logo system, motto, communications plan and weight binding sign guidelines, authorizing staff to proceed with implementation. Over the last year, we worked with the AdHOP committee and our partners at HUB to develop a brand that reflects the true spirit of our city. Today, I'll present the final design elements and review the items previously approved. Included in your staff report as attachments are the final deliverables, brand, communication and weight binding guidelines. To recap, the project began with phase one, where we got feedback from the community through community meetings. We conducted a citywide poll to select the new logo and motto, and we had many discussions with the PIO and AdHOP committees. In phase two and three, we developed the brand messaging, logo and city seal, which were reviewed and approved by the city council earlier this year. Now we're wrapping up phase four, seeking final approval for the complete branding package, which includes weight binding guidelines. And next we'll move to phase five, rolling out the new brand. Here you can see our finalized branding elements, including the official city seal and the official city logo and the motto Pride, Purpose and Progress. These, along with our new color palette, inform the foundation for the city's new visual identity. Though we use across most city communications and materials moving forward. In addition to the official city logo and seal, we've received multiple variations of each to be used in various applications. We also have the graphic files for the stylized S-curve that comes from the city logo and that sunburst that comes from the city's seal. We develop a comprehensive brand guideline that will guide staff in designing which of these versions of the logo will best fit their document, with the official seal and logo being our standard. The brand guidelines will also cover how we use these elements and how we apply them in our physical world, for uniforms and vehicles to swag and signage. Included in the deliverables are templates for staff, including memos, letterhead, business cards, forms and applications. These guidelines will ensure consistency and make sure the new brand is easily recognizable across the city. Weight binding signage is one of the most visible parts of this branding effort. We've created design guidelines that will guide staff in their selection of materials, colors, fonts and monuments, colors and fonts for monuments, park and street signs. These designs will help us create a unified and welcoming image as people move through city limits. In closing, we are asking for your approval of the complete branding system, including the logo, seal, city motto, communications and weight binding guidelines. The next steps would be to proceed with implementation. Thank you for your time and available for questions.
Any questions?
Thank you so much for the presentation, this is really amazing. Thank you, you guys, especially on the AdHOP committee. What is the timeline for the rollout? So let's say we approve this tonight, when can we expect these weight binding signs to be out in our city? These amazing, you know, color combinations and things like that, what, what does that look like?
So here, our goal is to introduce the city January one, but weight binding signs and street signs have a maybe a different kind of...
So when we went through all the collateral material to determine how much the cost would be to update all the things that currently use city branding, it is quite a bit of money. And so we will be prioritizing based on the impact the change will have. So realistically, to fully change over all the branding will be a multi-year effort. So the council had already approved funds for some street sign updates and we had purposely waited on that because we knew this was going to wrap up. So we have about a hundred thousand dollars in our public works budget for that. In addition, during the last budget workshop, the council allocated an additional fifty thousand dollars for first round implementation this year. One of the priorities that has quickly risen to the top is our electronic reader board outside of City Hall. It is a very dated system and I'm sure some of you have noticed the square panels have been going out. So those are, the cost of a replacement of a panel is four to six thousand dollars. We just replaced one less than six months ago and it already broke. So this is because the technology is so old. So we are now readjusting our priorities to try and update that reader board because we know the community uses that heavily. So we'll be going through and reprioritizing our list and based on what the budget can accommodate, we'll tackle all of those items this fiscal year, we'll return to the council during the next budget workshop, which is not that far away, and let you know what kind of the proposals are for the next fiscal year and what the associated price tags are with those. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to thank Ashley and Xenia, they did a great job. And this may look simple, but it takes hours of little tidy detail work to get this done. So they've done a great job and we'll all benefit from it. But when you're thinking of a brand, it starts with the people that work for the city and it follows through to everything in the city, down to the leaderboard in front of City Hall. And I just wanted to give one or two more food for thought ideas tonight. And one of them is, to be a friendly city, maybe we should add everyone's name onto their shirts that they have for the city so that our citizens know who they're talking to. And so that's what they'd think about. Also, now that we have that really cool orange sunburst that's coming on vehicles and we're going to have new logos and all that, is to make sure you investigate in reflective materials on those, just add to the safety of the vehicle. And the last thing is, our city limits signs are really sad. They, they've been around for a long time, so please include them at some point in time when you, you heard updating everything. That's it, I'm, I'm just thrilled with what a great staff did.
Yes, a big round of applause for you guys. Do you remember when it started? Maybe you weren't here yet when we started.
I was.
How long would it be started?
It was a few years ago. I wasn't in the project lead the first time we started, but it's been a spell of it, yeah.
Yes. I'm happy with it though, I think you guys will like it, I just started to see it roll out. The street signs are great.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm definitely excited, I want to say thank you to all of staff. This exceeded all of our expectations and I think it rises to the occasion, so thank you very much.
I'll make a motion that we approve it.
And I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? I think we should ask the True Flower Children from Colorado if they helped this.
We'll let them know. Thank you all.
Okay, moving on, this is consideration, the adoption of resolution support of Proposition thirty-six, the Homelessness Drug Addiction and Theft Reduction Act. And we did have someone from the audience that was going to speak on twelve A, our caller, anyone?
And I'll just give a brief introduction while Mr. Medina is walking up. So the city is a member of the League of California Cities, also known as CalCities. One of CalCities' top advocacy priorities this year is to advance solutions that help reduce crime and provide more support to people struggling with substance abuse while avoiding a return to the days of mass incarceration. As such, the Board of Directors voted to support Proposition thirty-six, the Homelessness Drug Addiction and Theft Reduction Act earlier this July. And to this end, CalCities is requesting member cities formally consider adopting the resolution attached in tonight's staff report in support of Proposition thirty-six. And with that, Representative Connor Medina from the League of California Cities is here to provide a presentation to the council and answer any questions.
All right, Mrs. Song, okay. Thank you, City Manager Sean Hadorn for the introduction. And good evening, Mayor and honorable city council members, my name is Connor Medina. I'm the Regional Public Affairs Manager for your Orange County Division of the League of California Cities. I believe there was a PowerPoint, I don't know if it's, it's all good. There we go. See if this little guy works. Okay, there we go. So as a brief introduction, I'll keep it very brief to the League of California Cities. Many of you are familiar with the organizations, been around since eighteen ninety-eight, so a hundred and twenty-five years with a mission of expanding local control and enhancing the quality of life in our communities. We fight in the legislature, in the courts, in the ballot box on behalf of our members. With four hundred and seventy-six members statewide, including thirty-one in Orange County. And I would be remiss if I did not mention that Mayor Shaver was unanimously elected last month to be the president of the Orange County Division for the twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five term. He's been on the division board as first as the second district representative a few years ago, worked his way onto the executive committee and now here we are in his presidency. So it's been a joy to work with you, Mayor Shaver, I really appreciate the time that you put into our division and look forward to the great work that we're going to do together this upcoming year. Now on to Proposition thirty-six, so what is Prop thirty-six? Prop thirty-six is a bipartisan measure supported overwhelmingly by CalCities, by our Board of Directors in July. And I really want to focus on the bipartisan aspect of it. This is a measure that has already garnered support from big city mayors, small city mayors, Northern Californians, Southern Californians, city officials all across the state of all different political leanings have supported this measure. And additionally, a lot of Orange County cities have, and I'll get to that in a moment. But this is a measure that has had overwhelming support, not just from local leaders, but also from the electorate. The most recent polling that's been released shows that regardless of where you are in the political spectrum, Prop thirty-six is very popular among voters. So Proposition thirty-six, or the Homelessness Drug Addiction and Theft Reduction Act, covers a few different grounds. First, it addresses organized and serial retail theft. Current law only allows the value of multiple thefts to be added together to reach over nine hundred and fifty dollars so that a felony can be charged instead of a misdemeanor if all thefts are committed with one intent, one general impulse and one plan. This limitation on adding together theft values or aggregating means that it is difficult for prosecutors to use aggregation in order to charge a felony theft instead of multiple misdemeanor thefts. Prop thirty-six removes this restriction on aggregation and permits the value of any stolen property or merchandise to be added together so that a felony may be charged. This change in law means that career thieves will no longer be able to commit multiple thefts under that nine hundred and fifty dollar value to avoid felony charges. So these changes are targeted for those that are part of the smashing grabs that you see on the news. Those that are involved in these organized habitual strikes on our businesses. Those offenders are who these new provisions would be aimed at. It also confronts the fentanyl crisis, something that is deeply personal to myself. I have lost a family member earlier this year to fentanyl overdose. A lot of the city leaders that I talk to have had members of their community lose family members to fentanyl. It's a crisis that currently state law is not equipped to, to handle. So Prop thirty-six helps combat fentanyl trafficking by updating the California Code section that permits judges to add additional time to the sentence of drug traffickers who deal in large quantities of drugs. Because fentanyl is so lethal in small doses, the initiative creates a separate list of weights for fentanyl ranging from one ounce to eighty kilograms and permits judges to impose additional punishments ranging from three years to twenty-five years in state prison, depending on the amount in fentanyl that is involved in the case. Prop thirty-six also creates a new law that requires judges to warn convicted drug dealers, including those who deal fentanyl, that drug dealing can kill someone and that the offender, if the offender sells, manufactures, furnishes or gives away drugs that results in the death of a person, the offender can be charged with murder. Proof that an offender knows the dangers of drug dealing can aid a later murder prosecution. So this is an important component that has been introduced as state law by Senator Umberg several times and has not gone through the legislature. This is incorporated in Proposition thirty-six. And it also incentivizes treatment through drug courts. A key unintended consequence of Prop forty-seven is that drug possession is being considered a misdemeanor and that greatly disincentivizes offenders from choosing treatment as an alternative. But the goal of the justice system should be to rehabilitate the drug users. So Prop thirty-six creates a treatment mandated felony, which permits prosecutors to change a felony, to charge a felony instead of a misdemeanor when an offender possesses a hard drug and already has two prior drug-related crimes. Importantly, it permits the offender to choose drug treatment instead of jail and upon completion of the program, it expunges their record. A study from UCLA's Drug Abuse Research Center found that empirical studies have largely supported the use of these coercive measures to increase the likelihood of an offender's entering and remaining in treatment. So we know that this works, it is just a matter of putting it into our policy. My friend Eric mentioned the retail theft bill package earlier. CalCities actually produced a really helpful guide that is included in the agenda packet showing the lack of overlap really between the retail theft bill package that CalCities was largely supportive of. It was ten bills and Proposition thirty-six. So they're tacking us from different angles, there are different solutions. So there, there were some concerns and there were some legislative sportsmanship that was happening over these and the legislature claiming that these were in conflict with Prop thirty-six. It's not the case and the legislature realized that truth and did ultimately have those laws, those bills pass, signed by the governor, we're really happy to see that. But Proposition thirty-six tackles it from different angles that that bill package does not. I mentioned the Orange County Cities in support, you would be in good company. And just like we see statewide, it's a diverse array of cities that are taking positions, North County, South County, different political leanings on these councils, they're still supporting this because it is good policy. So in addition to the city of Stanton tonight, Laguna Beach is considering Prop thirty-six tonight. Villa Park, who I forgot to include on here, I apologize to them, but they are also taking up the position on Proposition thirty-six tonight. Fountain Valley next week, Westminster tomorrow. And in the left column, all the cities that have already taken support positions. So you would be in good company supporting this and supporting public safety in your communities. And we respectfully ask the council to consider supporting a resolution in support of Proposition thirty-six. And I am available if you have any questions. The LAO's analysis that's included in your agenda packet goes a much deeper dive into what Proposition thirty-six would do. I'm happy to answer any questions as well.
Any questions? Any questions? I'll go ahead, move the other.
I have questions, sorry.
Oh, I'm sure, go ahead.
So in the agenda packet, when it talks about the consequences of, um, if Prop thirty six were to pass. It mentions, and I quote, "This would reduce the amount the state must spend on mental health and drug treatment, school truancy and dropout prevention. And victim services. And this would be in the tens of millions of dollars annually. So we will lose funding for really important programs like, you know. Drawout and Trump prevention, victim services. Can you comment on that? And how specifically that will affect Stanton, uh, Orange County?
Yes, I'd be happy to. So there specifically for the the funding that is garnered by proposition forty seven, proposition thirty six. Uh, doesn't really impact it too substantially. Um, you know, there's a lot of funding that is through, um, specifically from medical. That Prop thirty, Prop thirty six leverages to support programs that it funds, the, uh, the treatment programs that would be offered to, uh, those who have. Had drug offenses. Um, that funding is largely going to be coming from medical. So there will be impacts across the board that are going to be. Potentially felt, but there's also money that's coming in from new measures like proposition one that voters passed earlier this year. That is going to supplement any of the lost funding that could be distributed toward things like, uh, behavioral housing, um, you know, better housing for homelessness, et cetera. So there are other avenues and other funding sources that can be looked to, to fill in those gaps.
And another question?
Yeah.
In your opinion, um, would passing Prop thirty six. Uh, to what extent will it lead to mass incarceration? And given, you know, that the legislative analyst office even says that. For every person that we imprison, it costs us taxpayers over a hundred thousand dollars a year. Um, how, how much money is it gonna cost us to implement?
The L A O gives an estimate that if, uh, uh, the likelihood of additional inmates in prisons will be a few thousand. There's currently ninety thousand inmates in the state prison system. And Prop forty seven has reduced that substantially. Um, this isn't repealing Prop forty seven, right? It's it's amending parts of Prop forty seven that we see aren't working. So there will be an additional a few thousand individuals who are incarcerated because of Prop thirty six. Um, but that number is a smaller fraction of the total number of inmates that we currently have and certainly less than we did before Prop forty seven was passed.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Um, so one of the things that I have seen, um, and that I'm a bit worried about. Is that we're gonna be focusing all these resources on nonviolent offenders and giving them felonies. Instead of giving them these drug mandated treatments. So with that being said, the population of our prisons and jails. Right, right now, as they, as we speak, are a bit, you know, filled up. How will this affect us when we actually do have to go find the violent criminals? Or, you know, the people who do commit crimes against other people? How will we basically fit them into this equation if? The people that we're gonna be putting in jail are nonviolent offenders?
No, that's a great question, Councilmember Torres. The vast majority of folks who are incarcerated are violent offenders. Um, then the the amount of people that would be incarcerated because of Prop thirty six allowing the courts to potentially, um, prosecute them believes. Uh, it's a smaller portion of the total amount of folks that are in state prisons and they, the, uh. The fact that these crimes are not considered violent is still the fact that they, uh, the Prop thirty six is not intended to. You know, go after those who are just committing, you know, a, a one single theft here, you know, uh, single time targets. These are, the, the provisions of Prop thirty six. Are really targeted towards those who have committed habitual serial offenses. And it really locks down on that specific cohort of those who are committing these crimes. So. Um, it's folks that have committed serious economic crimes, serious economic damages to our businesses, to our communities. Um, it's not going after those who are, you know, just stealing one thing one time, right? It's those who have been repeatedly, uh, causing this damage. And when it comes to those who are drug offenders, right, the opportunity for drug courts to be used. Really takes them out of the equation from going into jails because they have that option. They don't have that option currently, so. They, when the choice is between doing a, a, a court mandated drug treatment program and not going to jail, uh, they would choose not going to jail. When the option is jail or these treatment programs, and we know these treatment programs are more successful and more impactful. If they have, you know, more coercive methods from the state to get them there. Um, we know that that is going to be successful and that diverts those that would be going to jail towards those treatment programs.
So theoretically, if somebody has stolen two times, right before they go ahead and let's, let's say like steal a Gatorade from seven eleven. Technically, under this prop, they could be given a felony, right?
I would have to equal over nine hundred and fifty dollars. That, that threshold would not be changed.
Okay, so it has to be nine hundred and fifty dollars, right?
Correct.
So, um, you know, there's other states like Texas which have thresholds like two thousand five hundred dollars around there. And it seems like they don't have this issue like us. So, um, I would really love to get to like the, the core issues of this, you know, problem. So thank you.
Absolutely. The core of the issue is something that should not be neglected in this conversation. It needs to be at the forefront as well. Our board reflected on that when they took this position. Um, there was a substantial substantive amount of debate that happened between, uh, members of our board about this measure before that position was taken. And at the, the. The most overarching part of that conversation was that the reasons why people commit these crimes. Or become addicted to drugs needs to be at the center of the conversation. It's not just about proposition thirty six. There's more that needs to be done by our local communities, by the state. Um, so absolutely, Councilmember Torres.
Um, and then one last thing. So, um, let's say these drug, uh, treatment mandated felonies, right? Well, what happens if somebody would fail the treatment? Would they get the felony?
Um, if they have been convicted of two prior drug offenses, um, then the prosecutor, the court, the, sorry, the, the district attorneys would have the opportunity, the choice. To have that felony be raised against them, but it's at the court's discretion if that would actually happen.
So if the drug treatment does happen, and let's say they don't complete it, then would they have to serve a term?
Um.
Uh, I mean, a jail sentence?
Potentially, um, they would require, for the record to be expunged specifically, yes, they would have to complete the treatment.
One of my biggest worries is that it's not an easy feat to get over drug addiction, you know, and I think that it takes multiple times. You know, nobody gets it on the first try. So. Um, I, I think that this is reminiscent of the three strikes law that we had in nineteen nineties. Um, that was. One of the highest crime periods of here in the United States. Um, I think that it had long lasting effects like increasing recidivism. So, um, counsel, I would appreciate if you guys could, uh, take a second look at this.
I'll make a couple of comments in support of the bill. One of the concerns that I just shared tonight was that our prisons would be occupied, and our taxpayers would be paying the bill for it. I think you have to realize that the majority of the people that are out doing the fentanyl. And the crimes in our community have already been jailed and they're out. And so when they're released out, if there's no accountability. If there's no fear of them having to go back to jail, they can continue on committing the crimes that they commit. And I'll tell you right now, the citizens of our city are sick and tired of what's going on with fentanyl. Local crime, prostitution, theft. And if we don't hold people accountable, it's gonna continue on. We talk about money. If I'm a taxpayer in this city and I'm paying taxes, the amount that we lose from crime. The amount that we lose from death from fentanyl and the tragedies of families far outweigh the cost of what this program is. Uh, being the, um, actually helped develop this particular bill. With many of the other law enforcement, there's not one law enforcement agency in the state of California that does not support this bill. There's not one city at this point that I have on this side not supporting the bill. There might be some areas that I'm not familiar with, but a vast majority see the value of this. And so therefore I'm gonna make a motion that we go ahead and adopt this resolution, uh, for the support of this proposition.
Can I just say something real quickly? Uh, it does have bipartisan support, which I think is really important. Uh, we have had a terrible retail. Um, that with no consequences, basically. And I think this will help that a lot. I think. I really like the fact that both, both sides of the, uh, political spectrum, uh, are supporting this at least. Some degree to some degree, and I think this bill is more than fair. And I think it may even help some of our homeless people if we can get them. On their third arrest for drugs in public and things like that, get them treatment. Maybe it'll help them. So they, they don't have any structure now. They have no consequences to their actions. And consequences make a big difference.
You know, in the nineteen nineties, we had plenty of consequences and even after that, and unfortunately, recidivism only got worse. You know, the more times you go to prison, the more times you're likely to go back in. And we're just gonna be repeating the same mistakes we made in the past, honestly.
But I think you're putting a cart for the horse, so to speak. I mean, if you want to be a political people, I think you need to go lower down on the scale before they become criminals. I think we need maybe more. Money and help in raising children in, um, schools, prevention programs. We used to have the deer program, which, um. But they.
Wasn't very.
But they, uh, actually helped kids stay away from gangs and drugs. And I haven't seen that in a long time.
So while I do, you know, like prevention methods, I do think that, you know, we say there has to be consequences, but. You know, putting somebody in a concrete box isn't gonna help them get better. If anything, it would worsen their mental health.
It'd hurt the rest of the community. The rest of the community will suffer.
If they go back out and then they commit more crimes afterwards. It's a, so then more time in jail, they have to start all over from the beginning. You know how hard it is for somebody sleeping on a couch to get their own home and things like that?
Oh, I understand. I, I think you have to look at the greater good versus the.
The greater good is making sure that they don't commit these crimes again by giving them the ability to live comfortably.
Question? Hey, Steve, you want to go ahead?
We there. I believe that the mayor made a motion. I'm not aware that's been seconded.
I can second.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Just confirming, Schaber made the motion and Taylor's making the second or is Warren?
Warren.
Warren.
I just have to make a comment.
Got it.
And just also confirming the recommended actions were related to finding that the item is not subject to sequo and. Action number two was to provide direction to staff regarding whether or not to approve resolution number two thousand twenty four dash thirty three. Mr. Mayor, are you, is your motion to approve the resolution? Yes, okay, so we noted for the record.
Thank you, Ms. Shinian. We have a motion by Mayor Schaber, a second by Mayor Potem Warren. I will now proceed with a roll call vote. Councilmember Van, I'll abstain. Councilmember Horace?
Upstate.
Councilmember Taylor?
I'm in favor.
Mayor Potem Warren?
Yes.
Mayor Schaber?
Yes.
Item does pass three zero. Thank you, Ms. Medina.
Here we now move on to item twelve B. This is the appropriation for repair of the Wethely and the Stamp Park Pedestrian Bridge.
Good evening, uh, Mayor, members of city councils, these are on your director of public works. Um, yeah, Tom, yeah. So, uh, this agenda item is for the appropriation of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to repair the Wethely and Stan Park Bridge. Um, in late June of twenty twenty three, a vehicle collided with the bridge, prompting immediate closure of the bridge. The bridge sits over the Orange County Stormbray Channel within approximate twenty deep, uh, long span and six foot wide. Initially, we believe that the, uh, bridge belonged to Orange County Flood Control and later found out it was city owned. In August of twenty 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 three, a structural engineer performed an analysis on the bridge, which confirmed that the bridge would need to be replaced. At a cost estimate of four hundred and thirty two thousand. Historically, city owned bridges are not included in the city's facility insurance program. Now, understanding the significant cost for replacement of the bridge moving forward, staff, staff recommends adding existing and future bridges into the insurance program. And having to pay a less significant amount, around ten thousand dollars, if a bridge would need to be replaced. Staff lagged to amend with the recommended action number two for this item to read as follows. Approve the process of the claim through the California Joint Powers Insurance Authority, CGPIA. Approve an appropriation of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the fiscal year twenty four twenty five general fund. Special project for the deductible for the repair of the same pedestrian bridge. And authorize staff to enter into an agreement for the repair of the bridge as approved by the city attorney with Alpha Structural. The firm retained by CGPIA to analyze the claim and provided the repair. Uh, Ken Crum and Anmar Alum are here in the audience from Alpha Structural. Uh, to answer any questions. This concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions.
I have a question. Are the plans and everything already drawn up?
No, that's part of the, yeah, that'd be part of the process of the offer.
So we're looking at sometime next year to start construction?
Yes.
And how long would the construction take about?
Ken?
Okay, thanks.
Uh, twenty two days probably. Yeah.
Twenty two days?
Yeah.
Um, sorry, I'm done.
I'm done.
Okay. Um, so you're saying that. For a bridge that's costing us over four hundred thousand dollars, it's only gonna take twenty two days to build?
Well, it's, it's gonna be shop fabricated and then brought out and installed. So a lot of that work's being done in a shop. So. You know, it has to go galvanizer and there's drawings and engineering and permit expedite and that stuff that has to happen. So it's, it's more than just. Twenty two days worth of work. Yeah.
And then what sort of, uh, guarantees are there on the quality of this bridge and making sure it's, you know, of. The quality so that it doesn't hopefully become damaged again?
Well, as long as the car doesn't hit it again, it should last forever.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, I, I, I did wanna comment that this is an incredible deal for our city to only have to pay a quarter million for a bridge that's valued at. Over four hundred thousand dollars. So thank you so much, staff, for taking that extra step of reaching out to the insurance company and, and getting them to cover a part of this. Um, I, I think this is a no brainer and the community, um, in our cities that use that bridge the most really needs it. And they've been wanting it for over a year now. So I hope everyone supports this bridge. Well, that'll make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion. Gotta get to myself. We have a motion by Councilmember Van, a second by Councilmember Horace. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Item passes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Item passes as amended.
Okay, we're moving on to all the communications.
Ms. Mayor, we have none.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the city council on items within our jurisdiction? Hey, hearing none. I'll close the public hearing. Written communications, we have none. Mayor, council, agency, authority initiated business. Announcements? Go ahead.
I would like to thank staff for this wonderful audio upgrade. Um, you know, it was a long time coming. Our resident staff served to hear us crystal clear. And hear, you know, all of the city business. So thank you very much.
I think it's televised on YouTube.
That'd be cool.
Alice, you wanna tell us about the moon party?
Sure, we had an amazing turnout at our fifth annual Mid Autumn Festival, um, last Tuesday, uh, last weekend. At, um, on the fifteenth, on that stand in Central Park. So thank you so much to Councilmember Taylor for showing up. And helping to present certificates to all the children who performed that day. And we had an amazing, uh, performance also by, um. A local high school that did the lion dancing and we had about a dozen booths, uh, show up from various government agencies, including vector control. Um, as well as nonprofits providing, uh, free resources for the community. So thank you so much. I hope everyone enjoyed it.
And Josh Newman was there.
Yeah, and of course, State Senator Josh Newman was there himself.
Anyone else? Okay, um, as many of you are familiar. Uh, the National Hispanic Heritage Month runs through September fifteenth to October fifteenth. And, um, I had an opportunity to talk to some of the, uh, people in our community. And we would like to celebrate that. So, um, I'm in the process of putting together a program, uh. And maybe early week of October that we can all celebrate. As you know. We're celebrating the histories, cultures and contributions of American citizens. Uh, they came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, Central and South America. Uh they came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, Central and South America. I was privileged uh during my college days to be picking peaches in Tulock. Uh in the San Joaquin Valley, I used to work up there in the summer. And I heard this great commotion in the orchard. And I saw a group of people walking down the road towards me and they had this big log of red banner. And I couldn't figure it out, but later I found that that was Caesar Chavez making his first walk. Uh for the rights of the farm workers. And I still remember that today and how important his contribution was during that period of time. And I still remember that because it seemed to me that as he continued on through the central valley. His his cause began to grow and grow and grow. And I think it sparked some interest in the growers because they wouldn't know what it was all about. I just happened to notice on my desk of my father-in-law, a copy of Caesar Chavez's biography. And so he did reach out to everyone and I think that uh he'll always be remembered for the good things that he did. And during our celebration, uh which we'll have here in Stanton, we get a chance to recognize. Individuals that have made these types of contributions, so I just wanted to share that with you today, thank you. All right, moving on, uh anything for a future meeting? Anything for a future study session, go ahead, Tom.
I would love if we could do a study session on um home studying, I saw that, you know, cities around us like Bonaparte. Have looked into this and I think it would be great to uh update our ordinances, so.
I guess, can you repeat the topic for the study session?
Um home studying is um the ability for people to uh have livestock and.
Oh, home setting, I'm sorry, I heard home study, okay, home setting, okay, thank you.
Okay, um anything else? I am from the city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, I have no items.
City manager.
Nothing this evening, sir.
Chief, you're up, thank you.
Right, good evening, thank you, Mister Mayor and City Council. In August, uh Stanton deputies responded to two thousand thirty eight calls for service, which is an average of sixty five a day. Uh we observe, or excuse me, they observed uh six hundred ninety four violations of law and conducted over four hundred patrol checks throughout the city. There were sixty nine arrests, twenty five felony bookings, thirty three misdemeanor bookings, eleven warrant bookings and five. D U I driving under the influence bookings, our motor deputy issued one hundred and four traffic citations. Um, we had no homicides, we had two rapes, twelve robberies. Uh using various types of weapons, twenty violent assaults, there were no arsons. Uh twenty burglaries, fifty thefts and seven stolen vehicles. Our response times throughout the month of August, priority ones took uh four minutes and sixteen seconds on average, priority two was eighteen minutes and nine seconds. And our priority threes were thirty three minutes and fifty eight seconds. Uh Stanton investigations currently have forty five, or excuse me, forty four cases open and have closed forty five cases. In the month of August. Our special enforcement team had over two hundred and fifty homeless contacts, seven of which received services. Uh five probation parolee contacts and forty seven prostitution related contacts. Uh they also uh had four felony warrant arrests. Uh three felony arrests, forty two misdemeanor arrests, recovered four stolen ve- uh vehicles. Um six uh penicillin handling, uh citations were issued and um contact with five human trafficking victims. Uh. That concludes my presentation and I am available for questions.
Go ahead, Jerry. Yeah. As you know, we own uh quite a few buildings and apartments in Tina Pacific and I was out with Mister Ren a couple of weeks ago. Um and one of them, well, quite a few of them unfortunately are vacant. And we have people uh breaking into them and living in there. And a few uh sessions ago, we had a a family that didn't speak English, the King here had mentioned that. They were having uh people break into the one next to them and they would call the sheriff's department and. That somebody would come and drive by, but nothing was really done, and my question is, um. Is it a felony, is it a serious crime to break in to a. I guess a house that's not occupied, a a rental unit not occupied? And is there anything else we can do about that or what is our policies and procedures?
Okay, so first of all, for it to rise to a felony, um. Burglary is the entering unlawful entering of a specified dwelling uh to commit a felony. So merely going inside of the vacated home uh or vacated dwelling. Uh to squat, so to speak, is merely trespassing. So I can't speak to what occurred uh with the family that uh was here a few weeks ago, I too have been out to the property. Um and uh myself and a couple of my staff members have walked it, um I think there's some things that we can discuss uh to help. Prevent some of the occupancy uh that is going on in there, um it's fantastic news that uh one of the buildings is is. Another one is slated for uh demolition, which is gonna be a big help. Um but we are working uh with the city to to keep the people out of there. Um I know they go back, uh they board it up and these transients. Continue to, well, or people experiencing homeless homelessness rather, um go back into the buildings, so we're working to uh. To assist those people, we want to help the people of Tina Pacific to uh to keep that problem at bay and to make it a safe place to live.
So if my house, if I leave my house for, let's say, thirty days or something and I'm not there, or I sell. Or I just moved to another house, but I still have my house, somebody can actually break in, live there for a period of time and it's a misdemeanor?
It's in the intent, so it may be, um it depends on if they break in to uh commit theft. Um or another felony, um if they're not creating a felony, um then that might be a specific situation. Or we'd have to look at other violations of law.
Okay, thank you.
Well.
I just wanted to commend you guys and Hannah and our staff on the success. Of our um human trafficking program that's going on in Stanton, the numbers are starting to prove that it's been a success. So I just wanted to thank all involved, great job.
Thank you.
All the support you're getting us from the human trafficking task force has been outstanding. We see the reports on that, it's great.
Thank you very much.
Is there any other business, anything from staff? Deny your honor.